Select Board being recorded.
And welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, June 13th. Two. The first thing we'll do is a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Sutton, since you're.
Accessibility shortcuts, eighteen items, voice guide.
No, I ain't helping.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store. All right, people, Chairman Russell S. Fox, Vice Chair Doug Moklin, Jason Perron, Chief Administrative Officer, sign out on Zoom, Administrative Assistant Robin Solak. First thing on the agenda is public comments. An opportunity for anyone that's not on the agenda would like to make a statement, this is your opportunity. I ask you to please stay on the state your name and address if you'd like to. Is there anyone here in this room that would like to make a public statement? We're going to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom?
I'm showing nobody on Zoom.
This is her. She was kind of. Okay. Deb, I know it's you with the mask, but if you could please state your name and address.
Sure, Deb, here are three short rooms. I want to thank Deb for coming to the demonstration on Saturday. It was very effective having a flyover, seeing what congestion there might be if the X, which is on problem one, if the docs are indeed out of spot. They're stable today. That video is made accessible to everybody if they want to see it. Michelle, you're traveling, she can tell you exactly where they are, seeing we'd be on problem one, brother. Yeah, we felt it was very valuable and we're still part of it, so, thank you very much for doing that.
Just for clarification, Mr. Perrin was there as well. He was out on a boat with Ms. Pratt. No, I just credit where credits do, right?
Yeah.
Ninety percent of life is showing up, so.
No, thanks for being there. I wasn't there, I was at graduation for law, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here, both of you.
All right, any other public comments?
Michelle Pratt, one fifty-two, Bercher Ave., and thanks Deb for thanking me. That's exactly the first thing that I was going to do too. So, we don't have the results in yet. We're going to do those tomorrow night at the CRC meeting, which everyone's invited to. It's at seven o'clock, in person at the grass rail or online. Come on dot org for the Zoom address if you want to join us. And Chief Landis will be our guest speaker as well, so he'll get to see that about us at the same time, which is good. I don't think there's anything staggering about it personally. I think the transient package being that one closest to the culvert is probably going to be difficult, but I'm hoping to take a still photo and measure out the distances from where someone would need to be in the middle of the culvert and open house jockey back and forth. So I hope to have that ready for tomorrow night. So, overall, I feel like at the five twenty-three meeting, there was a lot of reasons why the marina should be considered and may be needed by the restaurant to possibly ensure economic viability. Needs to be a part of total consideration, but I guess I don't really get that. It's a business owner who owns a lot of businesses, so I don't really see how the marina ties to it or the town's consideration should weigh into whether or not we grant a marina license because it seems like the concern should be over the safety of the navigation and the overall health of the lakes and the number of boats on the lake and not so much the property owners' financials. So, that was just a comment of mine. And then I heard all three Select Board members say that either they didn't like the idea of the marina, they weren't a big fan of the marina, or stood with LMC a hundred percent in opposition to the marina. So, it just seems to be kind of a little confusing, but I know that you guys are following the process and that's necessary. But I'm hoping, and sort of I guess expecting, if you guys have said that to all of us, that you're also going to say that to the state, because I guess now that the chapter ninety-one's been by four, it's time now for people to let the state know how they feel about it. So, if the Select Board doesn't like the idea, I was hoping that that would be conveyed to the state. Obviously, you don't hold their strings. I understand that they're going to do what they're going to do, but I would hope that they would take into consideration the town's feelings about it and the town's assessment of how it would impact all of us by really listening to what the Select Board has to say. So hopefully you guys would have some weight in that. And again, if you share it with us, hopefully you'll share it with them. Like, that was an important point. The last two things that I kind of had an issue with, I feel like at the last meeting on five twenty-three, when this was discussed, I think Select Board Member Perron asked. So my understanding is this is to get the restaurant up and running, right? He was clarifying what the vote was actually for, because sometimes it's a little bit confusing when we're talking about licenses, a license for what. But this was for the change in the parking to allow property to be rented for use of town property and state highway properties, what my understanding was. And, you know, the change was that they could add parking spaces. That's specifically to be able to have a marina there. That's not for the restaurant. The restaurant has parking for itself. This is all great, my understanding, and a pregnant thing, working, obviously, and all that. So I feel like he got the politician answer of, well, Town Council brought it up, and the planning board's already discussed it. The planning board's trying to talk to Town Council. Like, that was the whole answer. But I think what he was asking was, is this a vote for the marina or not? And the answer is, it was a vote for having marinas, because it was about parking. So I don't feel like that was a straight answer given, so, my opinion. My other question, I guess, that I will email, so I do get an answer, because I know it's mine, is just about the processes and procedures that were followed, which I brought up weeks ago. We're licensing the use of town right-of-way property and state highway property. It doesn't seem like that would be something that we could just say, like, okay, yeah, you can do this, property owner. He's a private entity. And so I would think that a number of things we have to go through in a process, like doing IRFP, public postings, soliciting bids, things like that, that I don't know that's happened. And if it has, awesome, and, you know, he was correct me, great. But I'm concerned about how the process is. Thank you, and thank you for coming. I appreciate that. If you guys can come tomorrow night or this, we're going to have the rest posted publicly for the demonstration.
All right, we're going to move on to, we have an appointment with David Sutton, Buildings and Grounds. David, if you want to come up. And we're here to discuss. Emergency access road.
Yes.
The rail trail.
Yes. We found a need that we had between police and fire in access to the rail trail south of the bridge that goes on the Point Grove Road. So after looking it over and finding out what we owned and how we could do it, we found a way to put in an emergency access road with a gate at the top to allow for emergency vehicle access only. Fire, police, ambulance, EPW, the rail trail maintenance, things along those lines. And I found a way to get it all taken care of with what we have on site. There's no money required.
Now, the emergency access road, does it go onto somebody else's property?
No, this is a hundred percent on town property.
Okay, so everything's on town property?
Yes.
And just for clarification, the gate there is to keep motorized vehicles off?
Correct.
Would there be a way for people to walk on either side of the gate to have access to the rail trail?
Entirely up to them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it being designed that way?
It's being laid out in a way, there's plenty of room for grass to go around it.
Okay. Smoaglin?
I'm familiar. Seems like it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea.
I know on Westfield with the raised trail, they mandated that we have to have emergency vehicle access, so it makes sense.
All right, so how many accesses do we have now? And I see we have Lieutenant Banish here, too.
Our major street crossings basically are access points right now. There's a couple others here and there, but they're through fields and so forth, so this would definitely be a legitimate cross.
Okay.
Problem with the crossroads, I did some investigating with the Piney Valley Planning Commission, the folks that don't see the rail trail and whatnot, is that the purlons out of there are reset back in the day when they first come up with the rules for that, when they put it in. Police and fire have a hard time getting them out of the ground in the winter. So it's going to be hard for them to get in. So this road is going to give them a good place to be able to get into without having to pull a purlon out of the ground.
All right, so what do you need from us?
Just your seal of approval.
Okay. Smoaglin?
We'll make a motion to give him our seal of approval.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Moklin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
All right, you have that done. I see there's other business you have. Would you like me to take it out of order so you don't have to be here all night long?
That's okay with you.
That is okay with me.
Excellent.
The next thing that I saw, you're talking about the two-year option on town building landscaping? Was that the next?
Yes, it's the renewal contract for all the landscaping needs across the town. And I talked with the contractor, Tonic Landscaping, and just because everything that's going on, the economy and whatnot, that needed to be a price increase. So him and I went over his contract and do their homework, and they came back with their corrected contract, which was only an increase of about nineteen hundred dollars, which surprised me. I thought it was going to be a lot more than that. You're doing a fantastic job.
Okay, so you were making a recommendation to approve the two-year option, accepting the second year of the option from Tonic Landscaping for fiscal twenty-three, basically a four percent increase, which would increase the number to forty-five thousand, forty-five dollars. Right?
Correct.
Any questions? Carl?
Yeah.
Is it okay, under our current contracting process we have?
Yep, you have, when you awarded it, it comes with two one-year options, so this is permissible for you to exercise this option under the contract and the RP that was originally issued.
Jason?
I understand the need for the increase.
Mr. Moklin, a motion?
Motion to exercise our first option on this contract.
I'll second the motion.
All right, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Moklin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, we're going to sign this.
We've got a little update on the HVAC system, if you're interested in some great information.
Go ahead, we're just signing this. Go ahead with that.
Bruce from BLW, the engineer for, came out, and him and I took a grand tour. He brought their up-to-date plans that they were working on as far as to date, and we found a lot of discrepancies on there and were able to correct them. And it was nice, we got some great pluses out of it by doing a little horse trading. They had a few, a couple of extra units of places that they didn't need them. So him and I discussed it, removed those, and used that to swap out to have some ductwork connected that were not connected. But he's got a great game plan. The kid they sent out is really a break kid, knows his stuff, and I think pretty soon we're going to have a great plan.
Good. That's good news. All right, David, we've done three things.
Three strikes and you're out.
You're dismissed.
Have a great night.
All right. Okay, we're back to the front of the agenda. Acknowledge payroll warrant number two-two-two-nine, dated six-seven-twenty-two, and the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. I need a motion to accept the open session minutes dated oh-six-six-twenty-two.
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Moklin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, need a motion to accept the executive session minutes of oh-six-oh-six-twenty-two.
As amended.
As amended.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Moklin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, I'm on the page two. Some of this stuff in order, real quick. All right, we have a letter from Chief Russ Anderson. We have four individuals that are retiring, some right now, some in the next couple of months. So he wanted to recognize Captain Paul Johnson, over twenty-five years of service. David Humphries, over thirty years of service. Matt Goff, twenty years of service, and Mike Ferraccio, twelve years of service. He's moving out of town. And just for clarification, in case I didn't mention it, Captain Johnson and David Humphries are graduates of the class of nineteen seventy-five of South.
There we go.
For the record, the greatest class that ever graduated from Southland High School. Okay.
Well, I know your youth and even experience, so I understand that.
Governor.
All right, I guess Chief Anderson is also asking that their helmets be designated as surplus, so they could be presented to them at their retirement ceremonies. So I need a motion to declare them surplus.
I would make that motion to declare those helmets as surplus.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Moklin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, next is.
Nothing that's making the dogs surplus. Where we had to do that?
That's true.
We had to sell them for a dollar.
I know.
Technically, Easttown property.
Yeah.
So we had to sell the dog for a dollar.
All right, the next is to accept the donation in the amount of one-thousand-three-hundred dollars from Jeffrey and Susan Torini to the Southland Police Department gift account.
I'll gladly make a motion to accept this generous donation of thirteen hundred dollars from Jeffrey and Susan Torini.
Need a second?
I'll second the motion.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Moklin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. We've already done that, so we're going down to.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There was, with the Humphries and the Johnson actions, the chief did have a second item in between those on the agenda, which was designating them for non-firefighting support roles.
Thank you for bringing that up. I did read that.
So, and that's where they can't go out on any fire calls, but they might have other support roles for which they would fill a, you know, an activity, sort of like what Buddy does right now.
Right. Everybody understand what he's getting at?
Yep.
Did you see it?
I do.
Okay, a motion to accept that recommendation from Chief Russ Anderson?
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Moklin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, next is to accept a donation of seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars from People's Bank for the master plan gift account to help with advertising and service.
I'll make a motion to accept this donation from People's Bank and with our thanks.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Moklin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. All right, next, we have a request from the Police Department, and we have Lieutenant Banish here. Lieutenant Banish, if you'd like to talk to us about this?
Simply put, we're just looking to increase our traffic control officer ranks from three we currently have up to five. Familiar, most of you are probably familiar with the two candidates that were before you today. Roger Cataldo was full-time officer for many years, and Robert DeLuca, who has chosen not to go through the Bridge Academy, is getting closer to sixty-five, so it just didn't make sense for him. So he opted to go to traffic control. So the only thing with him is I would ask his appointment to be effective July first.
But Rogers could be effective immediately.
Effective immediately. We've got to go through some additional training with emergency responders. I believe we actually have that already scheduled up, Roger.
Yes.
So. So his appointment could be today, tomorrow, whatever you have.
Okay. All right, Carl?
Yeah.
Do we need to add any of the yada, yada, yadas to this motion?
Yeah, generally, we have sent them for special DOT physicals, Brett, like we did before, so.
Yes.
So Roger coming back, having, you know, not been in continuous service, would need that. I think to transfer, because he's already actively under it.
Okay, so, okay. I just wanted clarification on that, so we don't get into any trouble.
Does have a physical to the bus company, so we'll try to.
Let's see if that, okay, okay. All right, would you like to entertain how you want to word that motion?
Sure. One with the yadas, one without.
Okay. Good enough.
Well, I take it.
I'm working on it, Carl. I was just joking. I'll be here all week, try to be. So for Roger Cataldo, effective
Soon as.
Soon as he meets all the yada, yadas, right?
Yes.
I'll make that move in the form of a motion.
Okay, need a second.
I'll second the motion.
All right, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Moklin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, next motion.
For Officer DeLuca to transfer to the, what do you call it, traffic control officer position, effective July one. And he does not need the yadas, because he's already in the employ of the town.
July one, twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-two.
Okay. Need a second? Okay.
Exactly.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Moklin, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. Lieutenant Banish, anything else?
I think that's it for me.
Okay.
Kind of traffic control officer, work the lake, sands gun?
As of right now, no.
Thank you.
It's up to me to discuss further, and.
Can we put that on for further discussion?
We can.
Thank you.
I'm just going back here. Did I skip over?
You're doing good.
Okay, I just see that there, and I'm going to make sure we didn't skip that.
He's got that under, under here. Yeah, you got to go back on the first page.
Yeah.
You have an appointment at six fifteen.
Okay.
It's almost six fifteen.
Okay, it's almost six fifteen. I knew I skipped something. All right, review and make reappointments or appointments to Southland Police Department, Fire Department, Emergency Management Department, as shown on a attached list to the agenda pursuant to Mass General, Mass Attorney General's Office guidance.
To be clear, Mr. Chairman, these are employees of town itself.
Okay. So, and that includes animal control, which is under the Police Department, includes dispatcher, includes part-time dispatcher, reserve officer, school crossing guard, traffic control officer, Fire Department, Fire Department paramedics, Fire Department EMTs, firefighters, tenants, and under emergency management, the director and all his individuals, Community Emergency Response Team, Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Service, and Southland Emergency Management Agency. So, I need a motion to reappoint all those individuals.
Not to read them off for these, but I just want to make it clear that my motion is going to be very specific.
Okay.
Of this document that's here, it's not, my motion does not include Community Emergency Response Team, Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Service, or Southland Emergency Management Agency. Those are appointments of the Select Board for volunteers under that and will be handled under the other process.
All right, so we're going to.
The emergency management director, if he's in here, that should be fine.
Okay.
Follow?
Yep.
Because we sent out a letter to the chair.
Okay.
That, of those positions that are appointment ending six-thirty, for have those people to submit letters of interest for appointment to those positions again.
Okay.
To see that followed through.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, but this should not be on this, that's a board or a committee in effectuality, but the Fire Department, the Forest Fire Warden, going backwards, Reserve Police Officers, School Crossing Guard, Traffic Control, with the exception of Mr. DeLuca, who just made that appointment. Again, this is redundant, but for the others, ACO, Police Chief, Dispatcher, Police Dispatch Part-Time, and Police Officers. I'll make that motion.
All right, need a second?
I don't know if I need to do this or not, but I know the appearance of a conflict of interest, because my brother-in-law's on this list, I was told to.
Why don't you abstain? You know, recommend that you just abstain.
I will be abstaining.
Okay, motion is made. I will second it. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Moklin, aye.
Abstain.
Want to abstain? Okay, thank you for clarifying that. That was a good catch. Make sure that.
Well, I wanted to make sure you still have a job.
Right. All right, we're back on the back page. Okay, everyone has had a chance to look, I think, at Randy's letter concerning sewer rates. Is there anyone ready to make a motion tonight, or would you like to discuss this, digest it, and make the motion at our next meeting?
That would be my preference for subject for discussion.
I'll go with.
Okay, I mean, obviously, we're going to have to go up. Okay, and we go through this process every year. Westfield has just gone up substantially. Some of this is on the taxpayers for the entire town, because this is a health concern. So if everybody can take their time, maybe reach out to Randy or somebody on the Sewer Implementation Committee to discuss, get more information, and we will table this to our next meeting, where we definitely will have to make a decision.
Yeah, I have no objection to that. I think it's a good idea. There's a lot of data here that should go out. I mean, the fundamental issue with the sewers is we don't have enough users on the sewer.
Bingo.
And again, no pun intended, totally intended. We flushed six hundred grand down the sewer for the project on fernwood, birchwood, powder mill. We had fully designed it. It was approved at town meeting to commit to the design, so then we committed to the project, and then when the project got to town meeting, it was defeated soundly. So the full design of six hundred thousand dollars was wasted. Now, so on top of that, we're now faced with having to go and look at fernwood, birchwood, and those surrounding areas, tiny wood, et cetera, and go dig them up and repave them, because the pavements did. That would have been done as part of parcel of the project. So it's, in actuality, it's way more than six hundred thousand dollars of inadvertent costs. Also note that the Congamon Road project, when that road was being opened up, there was an incremental cost to put sewers along Congamon Road. That was also soundly defeated at town meeting ahead of most of the design work, but still, it's just a matter of the when over there for all those septics that were, some of them were new, some whether or not the costs are spiraling for septic reinstillations. We've been carrying this interceptor and the parallel interceptor on the tax rate almost to its completion. So those on the sewer that think they're not affected by it, it's on the tax rate. We're paying for it. We need to get more users on the sewer. You know, whether that's in the form of coming down into the industrial park as that gets completed out, or through other projects as they come up, we need to get that done. Sewer rates aren't going down. The Westfield rates, we're in the middle of being negotiating a new IMA with them, but it's something to consider just as we go through this whole process. The rates are going to go up, but you're dividing the overall infrastructure that was invested for a much larger user base on a very small user base.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, obviously, this letter that Randy's proposing, you know, we're.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, obviously, this letter that Randy's proposing, you know, we have, it also reflects the issue where we have to deal with the intermunicipal agreement cost of what the Westfield City Council adopted for sewer rates. Both of us, so this rate structure will not only cover, it's going to cover the out-of-town cost of us sending our flow up there as well as our in-town cost of running and maintaining and staffing the sewer division.
Right.
I'll get off my soapbox now, but that's.
Well, you hit it, you know, but it's true. People that put in their own septic system to meet Title V, which is probably going to increase, it's going to become more costly in the future. So I think sewers is the way to go. I think a lot of people are going to realize that. We also have had some informal discussions with Southfield, you know, on the lakeside, which, yeah, people should remember that this whole sewer thing began because of the lakes. Jack Scully was one of the main proponents back in the 80s when we started working on sewers. We were going to try to do our own treatment right here in Southwick, and the state would not give us permission to do it. That would have been a tremendous cost savings, and plus, if we had put in the sewers at that time, it would have been a tremendous cost saving. But that's hindsight, and we're in the situation we're in. All right, Jason, anything you want to add, or?
Nope, this gives me time to really get over stuff.
Okay. Okay, reach out to Randy, or like I said, anybody on the committee. Under new business, Carl, new business?
Ah, yes, I just want to remind the board that on the 27th, you will be holding the prescribed ascertainment hearing jointly with the advisory committee, that's an ad hoc board, and they're going to be bringing forward with town council, the draft renewal contract, which is required. Cable T contract expires in September. So this is the public due process hearing to afford people to come in and give any comments regarding the system, and of course, we must note that a lot of the issues that people are generally concerned about have been preempted by the FCC, which relate to the rates, the fees, and the programming, which is generally the most important things that everybody is concerned about are the things that they really get to speak to because of the way the FCC rules work.
Okay. Should we have that hearing since it is a formal hearing with attorneys from our attorneys and their attorneys? Have that in the auditorium?
It is scheduled for the auditorium, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Carl. Any other new business?
No, not for me. One question on that. Just, I read this contract, Carl, but can we just have confirmation for that ascertainment hearing? Per. Forgot what's, I was looking for it and I couldn't find it real quick. I looked at, I saw it the other day. But that this cable, this is regarding mostly television programming only. It has nothing to do with any other service that Comcast may provide in the Town of Southwick? Yeah, I believe. It is. Yeah, this is not related to the internet. This is just for the TV. It is indeed a non-exclusive franchise. Right, and there will be, there will be a document that the town attorney will give for the chairman to read. It's pretty long. He may end up, you know, want other board member to read it. Section 2.2. I just wanted to get that out there and make sure that everyone understands that as well. Right, this does not in any way foreclose the efforts undertaken by the other ad hoc high-speed intern in the research and communications they're having with city of Westfield officials through their municipal utility.
Carl, excuse me. Doug, new business?
Nothing under new business.
Okay.
No, sir, nothing at this time.
Okay, I got to go back to the actions item. We have two bills here from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission that were in your chair mail. This is for the community block grant, Bungalow Street Housing Rehab, and both of them. The first bill is for $936.20, and the second one is for $886.31. Need a motion?
Want to, one for both, or?
One for both, I think, is fine. It's two invoices.
The two invoices. Doug Mogul will make a motion for Pioneer Valley Planning for the Community Assistance Program. That's a CDBG one, right?
Yep.
They both are. For 936.20 and 886.31.
Need a second?
I will second.
All in favor, roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Okay. Okay. The only thing I had under new business is we had a little informal meeting this afternoon with Senator Veles, Lakes Management Chairman Dick Brunells, and we also had our new Conservation Coordinator, Sabrina Poole there. We had an informal discussion about dredging Congamon. The and it went from, Sabrina, you want to say anything?
Um, it was very important, and I think there was some dialogue. There may be a chance of getting federal funding. Yes, Southfield just had a kid. The NRC, it's like it's, was that?
Yeah, some federal funds under that, and so it was a continuation of some of the discussions we've had in the past about dredging of Congamon, and particularly some of the areas that you can get to easier with smaller equipment. But we also talked about the possibility of a regional approach, or and Senator Veles came up with one, which might even work better. Maybe an agreement worked out between Southwick, Westfield, and West Springfield, because they're all impacted by our water. And if clean water is coming out of Congamon, it protects their water source as well, because they both have wells in that, in Southwick. So, again, it was informal conversation. Dick's going to continue to do some research on the federal level and state level, and Senator Veles is going to work on some different things on the state level. And I was going to probably in sometime this summer, discuss reaching out to Westfield and West Springfield to have a meeting with them, along with their conservation people and their water people, and and see if there is something that we could work out, you know, to apply for some sort of grant that would give us the option of purchasing, or renting, or hiring equipment to do some dredging. So. A lot of different options.
Every time I see Mr. Veles, I remember a meeting that we had when we were about to spend $800,000 or so to treat Congamon Lake. That is a great pond of the Commonwealth that the town stepped up to. Bonfle.
Right. Anyway, so that's why we're looking at federal money.
Exactly.
But it was a positive meeting, and you know, I know we rehash things that we've been talking about for the last 15 years, but sooner or later, we have to do something. We're not going to have any choice. It's a natural process. The lake is dying, just like any lake would die if you don't take care of it. That's all I had under new business. We're going to old business, North Pond violations. We're going to still wait and meet with Conservation and the coordinator and Fish and Game when we're ready to make sure that everybody's happy. The sewer system IMA, I think you've already alluded to that. We're going to start those negotiations in the very near future. Board and committee procedures. You've done a good job with that, Doug, and how is our outreach getting the message out?
Oh, we're doing great. So we've got, all the letters have gone out. We've got some of them coming back, most of them actually. And the website was updated today with a list of all the appointments that are open for appointment for July. The list is a little lengthy because it's not just boards and commissions that are on the list, but we're working on it. And then I also spoke with the Town Treasurer Collector Assistant today about getting this out of Excel and using the software that we bought, which this report comes from, having that directly posted on the web with the person's name, when their term starts, when it expires. I believe Southfield is actually using the exact same software, so.
Yes, I've seen that, Doug.
Website, and take a look at how they do it. That's what ours is going to look like, and I'm hoping to have that done sooner than later.
Okay, are we utilizing Channel 15 in the town crier?
I don't.
Would that be something we could do, Ken?
Well, you have four lines, the total of about 110 characters for the town crier.
Okay.
So it'd be difficult to list all these. If you want to give me verbiage, something to put on there, you know, with an end date. And as far as 15 with the bulletin board, if you want to give me a doc, or PDF, or JPEG to put up, I can either put it up directly as what you send me, or I can cut and paste and put it into a template. I can get something inserted that way.
Okay.
Great.
You want to keep working on it?
I do.
Okay.
We're in the home stretch on that.
There you go.
And then, you know, for those that are watching, that are interested to serve on a border commission, submit a letter of interest. The information's right on the website of where that should go.
All right.
Or reach out to me directly.
Okay, next thing is Deputy Fire Chief recruitment process. We have a committee that's been formed. Chief Anderson is on vacation, so we'll wait until he gets back, and then between Carl and Chief Anderson, they can begin that process.
Right, we're also finalizing particular vendors who will help facilitate and support that committee with the funds that we appropriated in the town budget.
Okay. All right. Old business. Carl, old business?
I heard from attorney today, he did approve the contract to form for the roof project. I'm trying to get it finalized through the designer and the contractor so that the three of you can sign it. You're already authorized to do so. And so that we can get that project underway and start with our first pre-construction meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
No, no, sir.
All right, Mr. Mogul, old business?
Couple things. High-speed internet submet last Thursday evening, and we are going to meet again within the next couple of weeks. I was tasked, we did not reorganize that board because of the relatively few members. We had just enough for a forum, so did not have a full enough board to reorganize that board, but we'll do that at our next meeting. I also told everyone that they only been to one meeting, they get to reapply for the position starting July 1st. That with Westfield Gas and Electric, the Whip City Fiber folks, they are encouraging us to, no matter what, to proceed down the path of establishing a municipal-owned utility just because of the length of time that that takes to do. And Mr. Sullivan and I are going to work on a financial model to present to the high-speed internet sub, to then present back to this board regarding a payback time period. They've got a tighter model than they had in the past with a lot of new data that's come in since the last time this was presented to the select board. And they also have a pretty good idea based on a preliminary survey that they already conducted regarding the inventory of poles and what those costs look like. So stay tuned on that.
Doug, they're working on that with the Town of West Springfield, right?
They are doing the Town of West Springfield as well, yes.
Right.
Anything else, Mr. Mogul?
Yes. We talked about 141 Congamon a little bit already. I've got some additional notes on that, which I'll get to later. I did revisit again with, there was an inquiry regarding hybrid meeting. I did talk to one of the boards that's meeting in person tonight about what tools they would need to begin conducting their meetings in a hybrid fashion. The, to be clear, the email that I got was regarding timeliness of minutes and so on and so forth. Some boards and commissions meet relatively infrequently or even on demand, so that causes a delay in the acceptance and posting of minutes. The hybrid meeting, one of the side benefits of it is you get the recording right away of the minute itself. It gets posted to YouTube the next day or the day after. So anybody who missed the meeting, they don't have to wait, could be three, four months for the minutes to come out. They just get it. So I met with a board tonight. I'm going to meet with another board if we get out of here before 7 o'clock.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
You know, the same thing. And we have budget in the new budget that just came out, starting in July 1st, right, Carl? To add secretarial support to some boards that don't have the resources to do that and enable it. We're also going to add that as a responsibility to that board secretary, just like we made recording meetings a responsibility to the board secretary. So to take the onus off the board chair to have to try to operate Zoom and let people in and start the recording, the secretary for that meeting will handle that for that.
In addition to those efforts, Mr. Vice Chairman, we did look at, Jim and I put in order for two more owls, because the library had been come over and borrowing one. And that wasn't going to work because logistically, someone might end up needing it once these other four potential boards start using it, and then another one in town hall, too.
Fantastic.
But we're also trying to address it with the technology that you're using this evening before you.
Getting better every week.
Yep, it's a work in progress.
Smoke on anything?
Oh, I got.
The only thing I have is, I had mentioned last meeting about the questions I had with the assessment, I'm still working on those.
Okay. Soon as you have that, let me know. Okay. The first thing I had under old business is the board went out with DPW Director Randy Brown and our supervisor to review roads, and let me say, before we look at Randy's recommendation, every single road we went on could use money in repair, every single road. But unfortunately, we have hobbled together $1,620,000, $620,695 available. So Randy has, after we went out and looked at different roads, he's come up with a recommendation to the board of Fred Jackson Road, drainage only, Miller Road to Gillette Avenue, that would be paving, Robin Road, reconstruction and paving, crack sealing on various roads for $80,000, micro sealing on Hummingbird Howell, Mockingbird Lane, Pine Knoll, and Falcon Crest, micro sealing on Hunter's Ridge and Mallard Lane. And basically, what this does is gives, buys us time on these roads that are still in fairly good shape so that we can concentrate on roads that are in worse shape. We also drainage and replacements, Buckingham Drive, Feeding Hills Road, Hillside Road, Clausy Anderson, North Wumis, George Wumis, North Wumis Street, at George Wumis, Point Glen Road near the state line, woodland infiltration and outflow. And that would take us to approximately $1,890,000 if there's no unforeseen. So what Randy is hoping is that in coming fiscal year, the availability of additional ARPA monies that could be used to get us to that figure. So.
Mr. Chairman, we do anticipate another allotment of ARPA funds by the month's end or maybe early July, and as I mentioned to you last week when we were reprogramming the other $300,000 from fiscal year '22, this would then allow you to make some decisions for those funds for fiscal year '23, which you then could overlay on the balance of some of the monies that Randy needs here. And then obviously, you need some of those funds for next year's fiscal '24 budget as a revenue offset because your school assessment was such a large increase.
The only other thing that I would add, because I know that, you know, The only other thing that I would add, because I know that, you know, do the number of phone calls and emails that all the board members get with people in their roads, we are still, still doing the patching of potholes. The town meeting did vote funds to buy better equipment to help repair some of our roads, particularly during the winter months. So it isn't perfect, but we are limited on our dollars. And I think our DPW is trying to do the best they possibly can. We already have two roads that are going to be paved this year that are prepared to be paved, and that is Mort Vining is set to be paved already from last year's funds, and the remaining half of Hillside Road is prepared and will be paved this year with funds from last year.
Right, and I, and I did speak to the supervisor about support the APD for crews on Saturdays to go out and do road patching so that we can catch up with the back.
Right. And it's, you know, I was pleasantly surprised, one of the roads where we received phone calls and emails from, they went out and did some patching, and, and I'm not saying the road was perfect, but it certainly was improved greatly. And hopefully they're going to, I know they're going to continue doing this work. And hopefully the federal government has been talking about infrastructure money that will be given to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'd like to, maybe the Commonwealth will, will decide not to do their usual programming and the money, but just funnel it right to the communities because I think we know how to use it better than going through all their unnecessary rigmarole. But that's my opinion. All right, so we have a recommendation, discussion, or a motion?
I think we're doing the best we can with what we have based on the, you know, the existing pavement management project we have, plus our tour, and kind of looking at some of the offenders that have popped up, without one intended. Ahead of that, that piece of equipment that we're buying that's able to pave 20 to 40-foot sections of road is going to be a huge help. So some roads have some particularly bad spots that you want to do the whole road because it's so bad, but if you could do 20, 40 feet of it in pieces, that's going to help quite a bit on some sections, and I get it. There are some roads on here that we got to do, we just don't have the money to do. And I'm sure, I turned my phone off, I'll get it on the way home tonight, I'm sure. But it is what it is. We're going to have to keep plugging away at this list as we go through it and, you know, every year keep getting better. The roads aren't going to get any better. You know, some of the roads that are not on this list are going to start coming onto this list, but I'll make a motion to accept the list as presented based on what we reviewed on Friday.
It's second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, four, aye.
Okay, we're going to sign it. that we have on property that they use for their, or they have an agreement with their promoter where they use it for motocross and other events over there. At, at the meeting, we, I think we had an agreement, it has to be ratified, a three-year agreement, so that the schools and the town don't have to meet every year, have it reviewed by town council, but we have a three-year agreement in, in principle. So they've been sent the agreement. Hopefully they're going to be signing it. Once they sign it, we can sign it at our, at our next meeting, and the school is meeting the 21st so they can vote to sign it. I also had a meeting with Carl and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and representatives from Wally Computer Associates concerning the possibility of a TIF agreement between them and the town of Southwick for the building of a new building in the industrial park for their business. Commonwealth is also talking about perhaps them qualifying for income credits also. So it's going to be an ongoing process. We'll, we'll continue to look at that with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Wally Computer Associates has to produce certain documents, but it's, it's competitive. Obviously they're a business, they're, they're looking at Southwick and they can look at other communities too. So nothing is a done deal until we have a signed, a signed agreement, and then it still has to go to a town meeting vote to be ratified. So potentially, when we're looking at the timetable, this might necessitate a special town meeting to get the voter approval. So, but I think if, if we can come to an agreement, obviously this is going to produce more jobs in the town of Southwick, and it's, it helps for a local business to expand, and it also provides additional tax revenue to the town of Southwick. So. And the last thing I had is unfortunately, Saturday, the Chief Landis, the Harbor Master and myself, we were at a wedding, so we weren't able to attend the demonstration or down at the Congammon at 141. So the Harbor Master and I will be taking to the water this week to review different things on Congammon and to make sure that we're well aware of what's going on.
So it was a good wedding, it was just unfortunate that you couldn't be at the thing, just to make sure.
Well, I, I, it was the wedding or?
Came out, I'm just making sure.
So, you know, but we have to go to the wedding. So, all right, that's the only thing I had. So with that, if I haven't missed anything, have I missed anything?
No. No, you've either voted or tabled or moved.
Okay, did you decide if we needed an executive session tonight, Carl?
We do, we have, we're following up on that issue last week, so Chief and I and Labor Council, that workout stuff, so we need to go over that with you this evening.
Okay.
Read fast.
Then with that, we will be going into executive session, not to reconvene, a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter C, 30A, Section 21, 2 and 3, and Chapter 214, Section 1B, Southwood Fire Department Chief Anderson regarding collective bargaining strategy with local 4919 firefighters unit and litigation. Executive session regarding Mass General Law, Chapter C, 30A, Section 21, 2 and 3, Chapter 214, Section 1B, and exception two, move to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel, do not to reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and do not reconvene in open session. Declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and do not to reconvene in open session. Exception three, move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and that the chair to go into executive session to conduct, execute, conduct strategy sessions and preparations for negotiation with non-union personnel and to not reconvene in open session. Move to go to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and that the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental on the litigating position of the body and do not reconvene in open session. Regarding Chapter 214, Section 1B, persons shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason, four, aye.
Okay, good night, everyone.